The meeting of the school board meeting of Wednesday, May 17th, 2023 at approximately 6:04. First order of business is pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next order of business is public comments. And before we start with public comments, I'm gonna make a brief statement about public comments at school board meetings. I'm gonna take some responsibility for the events that happened at the last meeting, as I haven't been strictly enforcing the school board policy BEDH. So I wanted to set some clear expectations about that policy and how we're gonna be doing public comments going forward. The public who want to make comments should address their comments to the chair, so me, not to other members of the board. Public comment period is an opportunity for members of the public to provide their input to the board, but it's not a question and answer session. So individual board members will not be replying during public comments as they lack the authority to speak on behalf of the full board. If a comment relates to an item that's already on the agenda, the board may speak to or answer the questions raised during public comments during that agenda item. If you want to request an item be added to the agenda, you need to send me an email a week before the next business meeting, and I will consider whether it should go on the agenda. We're also gonna be strictly adhering to the three-minute comment time limit. I would also, just as a matter of course, encourage everyone to treat each other with respect and mind words and tone of comments, as there are often children watching and sometimes children present during the meetings. That as well. Thank you. Any public comments?
Greg Whitmore, North Road. I've a lot to say about the questionnaire tonight. A survey was done a couple of years ago, and I thought we already covered this. It was pretty clear what the town wanted, the schools they requested. So I'm kinda curious why it was done again, and why it was only sent to families of fifth through seventh grade students. I have a second grader. I think my opinion matters just as much as anybody else. So, I don't know. I mean, it seems like you missed a lot of data, and there's a lot of anxious people out there who really wanna know what happens. And the fact that they weren't even considered was really an odd choice, to say the least. When I looked at the questions themselves, why was there a stipulation that buses would be provided only to Concord? I mean, posing it that way is really a leading question. And it seems that's designed to discourage families from even considering another school. They'll say, "Well, why would I bother making another choice if you're telling me right here I would only send, you know, they would only send a bus to Concord?" Why would Concord High School have any precedence over any other school? The way the question's even posed assumes that we're going to have a contract with them. We don't know if we are, but the way it's written, it sure sounds that way, right? Seems to me, as far as buses are concerned, eventually they just go to the schools that have the most kids. We have 50% of kids who say going to Co Brown, we have 50% going to Concord. Seems like we'd have one bus going to each school. And, you know, I'm at these meetings all the time talking, and I really don't want you to think that my comments, you know, are a unique perspective. So I'm sure you know I communicate with a lot of Deerfield residents, and their questions and concerns are mirrored in my comments. So back in the spring, over 80 people signed the school choice petition warrant article. And then we saw how the town voted. And of all the, you know, those 80 people, almost all of them told me they wanted Co Brown. So I think it's obvious. It's not a mystery that Co Brown is the clear favorite. And I know, I've mentioned it at each meeting since this, you know, kind of spring season started here, and I'm still waiting to see on the agenda when other schools are gonna be invited to school board meetings to give presentations to show what those schools have to offer. So, public comments go both ways. When the public comes to a meeting to speak, you know, they're coming for a reason. They drag themselves out of the house. Let them speak. Don't interject, because being combative just doesn't solve anything. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, being done, we will move on to agenda review. I do think we will have a few additional items to be put on. As I mentioned in the Facebook post, we neglected to add the review of the survey results. So we're gonna be adding that as item D under immediate business. And then I think there were a few items that you wanted to add.
Yes, we need to look at the Ski Abi modular lease that's expiring.
When should we, when would you like to?
We can do that after the survey. And then we need to decide if we're going to have a public hearing, so talk about the trust fund expenditures a little bit. And then during that conversation, I'll just roll in your year-end update for you, because I have that number too.
And then I assume we need at least one non-public?
Yes, I have. We need letter K and letter, I'm sorry, I turned it down. Is B the hiring one?
Yes, B.
K and B. Yes, I have several nominations. Thank you.
Do we need to add non-public for negotiation?
That's K.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else that anyone would like to see on the agenda tonight? Okay, so we will go into immediate business. Our first item in immediate business is the paving project. Chris, if you would like to.
Sure.
Give an overview, or Zach wants to, I don't, doesn't matter to me how you guys.
Actually, you can have the engineer.
Ah, incredible.
Either way, who knows more than I do, so.
Me too.
Steve Keach from Keach and Ouchum is our engineer for this project. He's also our engineer.
Steve in the blush, I hear your name thrown around everywhere.
Really? For the subject system. Take all these, Steve.
Well, I brought the paperwork. Just copies of drawings I'm talking about tonight.
And then, maybe we should identify the planning board member and conservation commission members that are here, because this meeting is partially in an effort to honor the 2015 warrant article.
Consultation.
Consultation, thank you, in regards to this project.
Yes.
I think it's appropriate for the minutes to capture that as well.
Yes, so with us tonight, we have invited several people in town, and we have Pete Chivalou from the planning board, who has joined us to participate in this discussion. And Errol, I assume you're representing the conservation commission?
Yes, I'm told I'm doing that.
Welcome.
He'll do it at a very good rate.
At a great, yes.
We have.
Can I have extra copies if anybody wants?
I will.
We have also, we did also invite the fire department and the police department to attend tonight if they were interested. Obviously not mandatory, but if they wanted to. Have you used the same prints that we have on them?
Slightly different problem.
All right, I'll scan.
But not to the extent that it's gonna matter in tonight's conversation. Here, Chris, these are for you. If you don't mind.
Absolutely.
It's a touchscreen, so, and it's very sensitive, so.
So can you touch it, things are gonna happen?
I mean, I can come up and move.
I was born in 1962. I don't touch a microphone. There's a chance that one of those other, Mr. Engineer here is VCR bought in 1986. I've never figured out a unit before. Anyway, I'm Steve Keach. In addition to working with Chris and staff here on a couple of projects over the last year, served as Deerfields Town Engineer since 1995. I'm sitting with us tonight as the chairman of Mr. Chivalou. Pete and I have known each other since we were younger men.
Different time.
Different place. What, obviously, the project involves, just for you tonight, is utilization of funds that were allocated for parking improvement project a couple of years ago, namely paving the faculty staff parking lot outside of the windows here. As most of you know, the, all of you, the surface of that is and always has been since the construction of the community school. Gravel surface. And over the years, with gravel has been lost, snowplow and weather. We've got a potato farm, boulders that, basically, get higher seams every year. And the time has come to something about it. One of the things that we've done, the project plans, this slightly outdated version, but a hundred and four states, we're not going around. It's actually 103. Chris and I made a little change over this area where we're gonna formalize the paved path that goes to the portables and the back entrance to the school, and complete a paved lane that goes around the perimeter for safety, maintenance, fire, et cetera. Slightly off the image that's shown on our touchscreen here. The, couple of other things as part of this. I anticipate that even though the area that will be paved is probably about 90% of the area that's presently gravel, I think we'll probably with 103 spaces, find that you actually can accommodate more vehicles there, because obviously parking with stripes in an organized fashion rather than somewhat randomly introduces an order. These spaces were laid out to be nine feet wide by 18 feet long. Couple of times I've been out with Chris, it seems the majority of the vehicles were occupied during a school that are modest-sized vehicles. So that, that is a standard parking spot that you would find in a grocery store or mall under most codes in the municipalities, including Deerfields. The main drive that will go through will touch you again here. You can scroll, I think, down a little bit. Now I know how I'm doing. I'm wearing things today.
Oh, there you go.
Save them.
Well, yeah, you can scuttle that up now that I'm good. This main path pile will be 24 feet. This bowl goes from the upper part of the lot to the porcupera here will be 24 feet. These areas here that don't see through traffic, to reduce pavement, and expense, of course, be 22 feet. So the the tree line that you see here, the bubble, is pretty much to where your gravel goes today. It gets pretty wide in areas over here, so that your area between bumper to bumper of vehicles that are parked headlights facing west and south, it's quite wide during the day. Want to narrow that up to 60 feet of pavement. It's, there's places out there where it's almost 80 feet today. Want to do that for a couple of reasons. Number one, pavement costs money to not only install but to maintain. It also gives us an opportunity for an environmental piece. The way that the majority of this lot drains is in this direction. I designed this with a 2% quarter inch per foot cross slope going in this direction. Introduce a treatment swell that will be a turf treatment swell that will receive that water. It will go to settling basin here that will have a burn and then an overflow, so that water, the storm water that comes off of the paved areas will have a place to settle out of any sediment that may be in there, winter sand. You're not, you're immediately gonna have a large environmental benefit because we don't have exposed earth. Where did the gravel that used to be there end up somewhere over here, right? Over the, in the years. So we've introduced a treatment swell to pick up all of this. This drains kind of from an axis that goes down through like this. Pavement from all but that semicircle here drains down and flows up here. Going back up to the main entrance road. There's a very small diameter culvert there now that probably is not really functional. Has no sub in it. Put in a proper catch basin here to pick up the water that may be coming along the main entrance road. This will be a typical four-foot diameter precast concrete with two-by-two steel piece of 15-inch density polyethylene pipe to an outlet at this location, to a stabilized pad, so that it knocks the velocity out of it before it continues on its way. The drainage from a portion of the lot that extends sort of radially of this way, this ends up over here. We're basically holding the grade and contour of the lot, right? Except for the spine grade. In order to create a proper foundation for the pavement, there's typical, I don't know, they made it to the sheet two, but I'll just talk about it. Typical cross section will have nominal six inches of either crushed gravel, 304.3, or crushed stone fine, 304.4, added above the existing gravel surface. What that will do is give the contractor something to grade, something to grade and work with. This is your existing gravel lot. There'd be a nominal six inches of 304.3 or 304.4 just above it before the installation of pavement. Pavement itself will consist of two courses. A wear binder course, two-inch thickness with three-quarter inch aggregate, and a one-inch wearing course that will have three-eighth inch aggregate. Nice and smooth, you know, for the opportunity to stripe it so that the parking layout that we saw on the initial slide can be installed. Can we go back to the initial slide? Thank you. This portion over here, as I mentioned here before with Chris, and one of the things when I first met with Chris is he wanted to formalize this. Recall the last year at the outset, inclusion of your subject replacement project. This area needed to be paved in here. So this new pavement here will knit and tie into that on the horizontal seam that extends from the school to the maintenance building that's there, so that that whole area will be correct. When we're done, and similar to that art and lot itself in this area over here where it feeds down to where your outdoor classroom is, we'll clean that up. There'll be more grass and less gravel than there is today, because there's no reason to have that, right? And, again, pavement costs money, and it does not only install but to maintain. So, the, I think from a standpoint of construction, that's pretty much what we're doing. Talked about the drainage, we talked about the grading, we talked about the environmental piece. Is there any questions that board members might have, Jim?
Anyone is welcome to ask questions if they'd like.
I think the big, the big question is, and this is in regards to that warrant of 2015, that we're using a environmentally sound method to reduce surface runoff and storm, rainwater, stormwater runoff into a disease pond.
I don't think we're gonna reduce the water runoff. We're gonna reduce some, because you're gonna have more grass and less surface when we're done. I didn't do a direct computation, but I, I'm speculating that somewhere around 90% the size of.
Exist.
What isn't green, right?
Yeah.
Will get 10% smaller, larger, right? And, because this area here, which is some places over 20 feet, will now be green.
Well, we see a reduction in silt being.
Significant. Because the fines that are in your gravel mix that was once your parking lot, and that's why it's so bony now, that's all gone. The fines in the gravel have washed away over time. And because of the rough nature of your gravel lot with the pumpkins that come up, you know how when they plow it, they'll hit one of those, they'll go over it? I would tend to think between the fact this will be flat pavement, it'll soak up the sun and add some heat to it, that you'll probably reduce the amount of sand and salt that you're presently using on it, which is a good thing for the pond, right? And also, the fine grading that's done to it. Now, I designed this so that this hasn't, through this area here, which or is narrow, it takes the least amount of sun, has a quarter inch per foot or 2% cross slope we're taking into the treatment swell. So 100% of this pavement will be treated before it discharges to the environment. Right now, I'm not sure any of it does. So, you know, lots of times people think you're adding pavement not environmentally friendly. In this particular case, surface that has to be maintained has gotten smaller. And the pavement, grade and contour of the pavement itself will direct the storm water to a place where it has an opportunity for treatment, which is an opportunity that simply doesn't exist today.
And then, one of the other, there was another bit of language in that article. I know the answer, but I wanted to.
Just quizzing.
No, I wanna hear you say it, so that it's part of it, more so for anything else. But in that article, it suggested using something like permeable asphalt, and.
That can work. This would, is not conducive to it, this location, because anything that goes through has got to go somewhere. The dense gravel, glacial fill environment that's here is simply not conducive to it. We're sitting on sands and gravels, all wash material, it would be an excellent location for it. In order to do porous pavement here, we would have to excavate, what, three, four feet?
Yeah, plus it's a, after it's done, if somebody accidentally puts sand on your parking lot, it causes a problem. You don't vacuum sand out of porous pavement. It's, that's what we're talking about.
The other thing I found out with porous pavement is, number one, it's significantly more expensive, not only to install but to maintain. There's the piece that Pete talks about, that it doesn't generally, partly because of the expense, the fact that you would have a hybrid here where your existing paved surfaces are plowed and maintained in a traditional fashion, that have basically two sets of equipment, two sets of treatment. Now, when you're getting a six inches or a foot of snow, and they wanna open the school at time the next morning, you know, is that, how practical really is that? But, you know, that's just my opinion. What is fact is the geology here is not conducive to use of those products.
And then, as far as doing the binder with the top coat, are you, would that be proposed as a, a great construction of the retention areas? And binder year one with the top coat year two?
Kind of what I envisioned here is a sequence that would look something like this. On or above the first week of July, everybody's gone. First order of business would be for the contractor to come in with a small excavator and selectively remove and excavate and dispose of the pumpkins that are in the lot. Want to get those out, because the frost gets under them in the winter, and they lift up, and they'll fracture your pavement. So as many of those that could get out, I, I thought about putting a spec where it would be scarified. I'm not sure that's really necessary to take some compaction out. You know, Chris and I walked around the other day, and we're going one, two, three. I picture, you know, before the contractor mobilizes, that we get Chris a couple cans of marking paint, right? And we go out and, you know, wherever there's orange paint today, when the contractor's done, it better not be there. You know, that type of thing. Nobody knows that surface better than Chris does. Now, I could have one of my guys come on. I could do it myself, but he knows it better than I do. So I think that would be a good way of doing that. After that's out, there's not a lot of grading of the existing gravel that needs to be done. Remember, the finished surface of the new lot is gonna be a nominal six inches of material plus another nominal three inches of pavement or nine inches in total, higher than it is today. And that's important, because it creates the grade for us to drain off to the treatment piece. It avoids the need to excavate material other than the rock, large boulder that's in there. So, basically do that, add the material, fine grade it, compact it, and you're ready to pay. There's a little bit of excavation that needs to occur and throughout the surface to build the stormwater treatment piece. But other than that, it's it's pure addition. To your questions, Zach, about, about paving, when I started my career 38 years ago, the custom was binder one year, top the next. I personally dislike that. I think the wear and tear that you put on the binder, introduced to it, because it is coarse textured with plows in our climatic region, takes away life of your binder long-term.
Okay, so you'd rather cap it right away.
I'd rather cap it right away, right? I don't know, Pete, what's your thoughts are about that?
Well, it's not, it's not a road, and it's more a parking lot, so I would say get it done, get it done.
Paint it.
Get it done at once, be done.
And we have to stripe it once then, Zach, right?
And I'm glad that your plan includes minimal excavation, because obviously excavating here on this site hasn't been the most pleasant experience for some of us.
No?
No.
Let's just hope they're pumpkins. That's it.
Let's just hope they're pumpkins. Geez, what does she mean?
No Volkswagen, sorry.
No.
Those student bakers buried our car.
No, it's kind of like, you know, Oak Island, right? You never know what you're gonna find. That's a great show. It's a lot of the season, cloak finale, so. You're gonna have to wait a whole nother year to find out, to find the arc of the code. The other couple of things that we're doing is, over here, we're striping this out, I forgot, Chris. We're striping this out to create an ADA space for the portable, so that somebody who needs that space doesn't have to use one of the ones out front. The other thing we're doing, contrary to this drawing, the revised drawings in front of you with the large format that I gave Chris tonight, this area in here, it showed the stripe gore, you know, where for the van access space. The whole width of that thing is now gonna be striped out. Creates a guard for people who are using a van accessible space here, but it also keeps it open, so that during the day, if Chris people or anybody else needs to go over here, there's not a car parked around, right?
Is it, is it possible or conceivable, so there is, there's a traffic problem we encounter on a daily basis, twice a day, with the buses, they're doing everything else. In years past, the buses will swing into the front loop here and then drop off the kids, and the parent pickup line would go out back, you know, cafeteria, and then back out. and then drop off the kids, and the parent pickup line would go out back, you know, cafeteria, and move back out. You had to reverse that during COVID, so we have two lanes coming through the loop, with the fire chief.
Where your cones are.
Yep, and the fire chief has indicated that's not gonna be acceptable next year, but moving forward, he doesn't want that.
He doesn't want two lanes?
Doesn't want two lanes, he wants his fire lane back. Is there enough width in here for us to potentially use this as a bus lane around the back of the building, so the buses can...
It's, what we've got is, we stretched that to get, what, ten feet, Chris? Yeah. He wanted ten feet, because it was the width of the vehicle and that's up. And I guess it kind of is there for emergency response. I would think a good driver would be able to negotiate that.
How about a new bus driver, because they all seem to be relatively young.
Yeah, we might do the opposite, we might have parent pickup lines.
Well, so that, that creates another question. Let me tell you what, could we, could a pickup truck easily navigate?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Let me tell you, I've been the engineer of record for the Marybach School District for like twenty years, right? How we deal with, when our high school in Marybach was built, you had two types of drivers. You had people who drove by car, students.
You guys can get back to us in a...
I, I'm mildly embarrassed that we don't have somebody here this evening, so that has a lot more knowledge than I do. It's not hard, but I, I would like to, um, what's the phrase that comes to mind is "time is of the essence", and, and that's how I'm approaching it, I'd like to have input by, before the end of the week. If that, if that works.
Yeah, well, because because time is of the essence, if we put the bid out and there's a, a issue raised by the conservation commission... We can always do an addendum, we can, we can hold off, but I don't want to, I wouldn't want the conservation commission to feel like they weren't at least consulted.
Oh, I, I, um, I don't think at this point that's particularly possible, since you raised it. It was brought up at the conservation commission meeting last week. We're dragging our feet just a little bit, that's why I'm mildly embarrassed, but I'll, I'll try to get, you know, if there's gonna be any significant comments, I'll, I'll try to get them this week.
One thing to keep in mind, Zach, is, is that if this was a private sector project, parking lot expansion, they would have to make a formal application, like, say, plan review. And it would vote jurisdiction of the town of Deerfields, site plan review regulations, which, the portion of which I wrote, in which I review every plan that goes in front of the plan. And I can tell you that this arrangement here would satisfy those regulations. So, we, the you're going from zero in terms of stormwater treatment today on a somewhat less than stable gravel surface to an engineered system that provides treatment swell as well as settling basin to get rid of both material that can fall out of sediment, that breaks the velocity, drops out, and floatables, which would be trapped in the outlet mechanism. Water settles out, water goes down, the floatable will break down, period. So, that will keep, nobody smokes anymore, so you can't say cigarette. But it keeps gum wrappers, how about that, right? Is that politically correct? And things like that out of the, um, out of, from going beyond, right? And these are mechanisms that we simply don't have, that have not had since the schools put them. So I think, I was aware, maybe aware of that one.
I did.
And I said, oh no. The, um, but you can only do what you can do, and there are one impact development means and methods. But you don't and give you a real nice set of plans that you could never afford to know. There's, there's the stark reality of it, right? So, and you would have zero benefit.
I would, I would motion that we pursue getting a, a package out on the street, so and if you'd like us to make that motion. A move that we ask Steve Keach to finalize the bid documents and work with Patty's office and Chris to get them published on the street as soon as possible. And I would ask that include the provisions for the light posts that we discussed in Ottawa.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion?
We need to add language about this changing the constitution, getting back to us.
I don't know if we need that language, I think we have an understanding with them, I think that's a reasonable.
I'll give Arrow my contact information.
I'm assuming Pete, you're okay?
You don't regret that.
Our paving bids are coming in for the town tomorrow, they're gonna be determined on Monday. I, uh, implore you to hurry up. As Steve said, time is of the essence, and you're gonna be...
We're behind.
You're behind already, yeah.
I would ask for a tight, this title window is feasible.
What is the window?
Well, this is what I'd recommend, if, let's say, today's the seventeenth, right?
Our next meeting is June seventh, if that helps.
Okay.
Two weeks.
No, it doesn't really, you know, because they, I kind of envision the next time that you see this when you, Chris has collected bids, right? So, I, I'd never like to have, I talked to Chris about your procurement process, right? He'll put it, you know, I'll give him an invitation to bid. And anybody who is interested in bidding can pick up plans and the short form documents at whatever location he I guess you could, you could even email them. I think it would be appropriate, given the fact that, you know, Monday's what, the twenty-first, right? Twenty-three, yeah, twenty-one. If it goes out on the street next week, to have bids due, you have a meeting on the seventh, you have one on the twenty-first? You can always call another one, if it's necessary.
Yeah.
Subsequent to the seventh, when is your next regular meeting?
Twenty, twenty-first.
Pete, what do you think, twenty?
Call us, have a special meeting, pick your, award your contract in between the...
I'd like to have it out there like three weeks, right?
Two weeks is enough on that. That's pretty cut and dried, what has to be done.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest with you, we're not awarded, we don't award it to the twenty-first, and we hope it's somewhere. So, that work's gonna take a month, three weeks?
Well, it's, the, the big thing is, is that you guys have to have an interview after you award, you know, you gotta talk to the people whoever you're gonna give it to, you're gonna need some time, so if you have a a special meeting after the seventh to pick your contractor, and then...
Maybe mobilize and get it fitted, you were scheduled to...
Because the problem is, you're gonna, you're already towards the end of June.
And you can't start until the first week of July anyways, right? Last day of school.
Nineteenth staffer here.
After that, so they could start the end of June.
Yeah.
In Marybach, we've always figured the week, the day after the Fourth of July.
Which, even that week is a short...
We do have a summer program that starts the week of July fourth.
But that, they don't need that part.
Minimal table, right, we can figure that out.
We'll be in the modulars, so, we will be using the modulars.
We'll just make sure we park out of the way.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would certainly say, the, the the more urgent we are in getting this out, published and back, the better, because I, I wish we were a month ahead of where we are.
Well, the reality is, is the size of the project, it's a filler project, right? Or it's a logo back project, right? And I tell you, the way I typically do these things is between Chris, Pete, myself. Hey, Deerfield's got this thing we need to go look at, right? And, and we're not gonna get Continental and Pike and people like that business, right? You're gonna get people, probably many of whom you've worked with in the past. I know your contractor for the subject system project is very interested in that. I spoke with him very recently. So...
I can't imagine him ever wanting to come back here after this project.
Well, he's a...
Someone else can dig up the rocks.
He's a guy for punishment, and he really is. And that was punishing him, so recently we were speaking, because of the town of Deerplast, I overtalked a little. The, um, but anyways, so you'll get bids, right? I usually like to have stuff out three weeks, you know, I think having bids due if you're, you're meeting on the twenty-first, which I presume is also a Wednesday?
Yes.
If we have, if Chris receives the bids the day before, it's probably an adequate amount of time. For him to look at, to make sure, because it's a, it's a lump sum bid, it's not a unit price contract, you don't, it, it can't not be balanced, right? It's just getting the scope, so that there's no change orders, and that's my responsibility, right? So he'll get some number of bids and have a number. And then, we just have to, the only question is, other than the number, is the individual who submitted it qualified to be awarded, can they give you a bond? And then assurance certificate, delivery dates, the other question is... So let's talk about that. So if, if we assume because of, they went to bid in June twenty-first, they're gonna need time to fit it into their schedule, so they start somewhere in early July, right? You know, there's no demo here, other than taking down a pole, which I think is by others, that's, I think that probably Chris with his chainsaw.
We don't have, we don't let him have a chainsaw.
No? You don't have cool toys like that?
I do.
There's, there's very little down, right? Other than rocks, pole. Pete, right, because there's not a lot of digging here. It's, other than a day of walking around, you're looking for orange marks, right? Before gravel comes in. Nobody's gonna come and go from the site, when they're here, when they leave, it'll be ready to pave, fine grating, paving. Now, there may be a lengthy period of time between when material is down, before it's fine graded and paved, depending upon the schedule of paving company. I presume a lot of the people who did, they did this, don't pave themselves, they use, you know, they use a sub, a paving contractor. We may get small paving contractors who did it as well, because that's where all the money is. So, I guess time will tell, we do this every year, we've got that magic eight window, eight week window.
So are we comfortable waiting until the twenty-first, or do we even wanna call a special meeting?
I think that'll work okay, we can get this out next week, Chris. I mean, I don't know what your publishing did, like, did you put this in a paper, right?
It's gonna go in the paper and on our...
Yeah, it has to win the paper, at least for a couple of days, and we put it on our website.
All right. And then there's the phone calls.
Yeah.
The, um, so, in we'll see, you know? You can always, if Chris lets you know, Danny, that a week before the bids are due, that nobody's picked up drawings, we can send out an addendum that extends the bid period, but let's go with what we know, you know, we're comfortable with, and that should be fine.
So should we have them do like the nineteenth, then we can review them on the twenty-first?
If they were due on the Friday, so we want to review them on the twenty-first, they're due the previous Friday.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. Uh, give Chris a, a couple of days to review them, you know? Typically, we have a, a, a number of people score the bids, although this is relatively...
This is a dollars thing in the end book, yeah.
But at least make a recommendation, and then we can act.
Yeah, I mean, what I would envision is what I typically am accustomed to, is Chris gets the bids, him and I, he shares them, we, we talk, and he and I make a recommendation even.
So I guess, I guess I would say, as part of my motion would be, with dates, so that we can award on the twenty-first.
Is that okay with the second? Okay. Um, is everyone, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any of those?
Or no?
Or in whole?
Selfish game.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's for that.
You too.
How did you think about the video, it's, it's not letting people... I just tried logging, getting it myself. And it stopped recording at some point, so when I looked up there and I came back, I started recording again.
They're not, let's, yeah, I would, yeah, trust me. Yeah, it's, we can arrange it, you guys, you guys are in.
Unmute. So we're recording, so we're good. Okay, back in action. Item B is building issues. Great? Fire away.
No new building issues, other than the ongoing loop that you're just gonna be taking care of this summer also.
Do we have a start date for that? We don't have to...
What day?
I don't know.
The day after the kids are here, they drop material, and then they'll have a truck here to suck the, after we get off the roof. We do need to decide what we wanna do with the stone.
Start to stay.
What?
See if, see if he can use it in his retention pond.
Maybe we can use it in the retention pond, and in the swells, if we wanted a draft swell, there, but other than that, we're gonna be stuck with tons of rocks. Make a decision.
That's a lot.
I mean, we could. I don't know, what?
My husband likes rocks.
We've got a lot of rocks, it's a lot of rocks.
And it's not nice rock, it's just...
Surrounding the stone.
I mean, we can probably advertise for someone to, they'll, then they'll pay for the trucking if we give them the rocks, otherwise we have to pay for the trucking to get them out here.
So, my little peanut brain, I remember somewhere, something about when you unballast a roof, it can be ballasted, but it ballasts, it also was required to stay on site. I don't know if I'm right or wrong in that, but somewhere in my little scroll head, I remember.
I will check with my roofing contractor.
See if you know something. I would say, the interim, if it just needs to come off and get piled somewhere, you probably could pile it up behind a baseball field.
That's getting it from
These don't, they're trucks.
Too bad, I guess you could run it up and make roads there, which is gonna be my alternative if no one wants to snatch it up. Too bad, I guess you could run it up and make roads there, which is gonna be my alternative, if no one wants to snatch it up quickly.
I think we should just empower Chris to build whatever his discretion in any way, say, decides.
Go for it.
Wait, do we need a motion on that, or, um?
Yeah.
Or your wish.
You're good.
We're doing it, yeah. Um, no other major concerns or the need for contractors right now, or is it cheap?
Oh, knock on some door. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, you're welcome.
How did you want me to mention the, the replacement from the building, the replacement, um, of the mats?
That was under surplus. Let's say wrong. We added a conversation. Good, I got you, Wendy. Um, this is not really, I guess it does fall under building issues. I didn't know we should start a discussion about what we're doing on modulars, potentially, if we, if we wanted to invite people back at some point to sort of.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Do you mind if we let our math team do their presentation, and then I'll switch back to that agenda, I don't feel like.
Yes, let's do that.
We have stuff, we have stuff here, waiting patiently.
Yes, but they're excited about paving.
I'm sure they are excited about the topic.
Yes.
Okay, so now, so. And you, if the board remembers, we had a conversation with our math department earlier on about piloting the math program, and the board had asked the math team to come back and let us know how the pilot went, and whether or not we are interested in moving forward with that program. Um, so now that they've spent some time, we, uh, have the team back here to do a presentation for you.
Hi. Sorry, we're trying to get that.
We have new board members, do you want to do introductions quickly? You want to start, Jamie?
Sure. Jamie, I have eighth grade math specialist.
I'm eighth grade math.
Thank you for coming.
Sorry for the long conversation.
It was long.
I was excited about it.
We can kind of watch the last bit, maybe, up there.
All right. Um, so I figured I'd start it off, just to give a, a little bit more information. We have the Corwin, who is the fourth through eight math specialist, she's not been here today, she's with the seventh grade field drifters, as well as Nick, um, Team Jermaine. Um, and Samantha did most of this, so I just wanna make sure, like, we, I myself will do my best to answer questions today, but really, I'm gonna defer mostly to the medical team. Um, the big idea is pilot, do you want to? Okay. So there were, um, some original pilot questions that were asked, and, um, and so we kind of have been looking at all of those things going along. We did a student survey, uh, basically, like, I really have been a lot of hands up on this, this has been the middle school, so, uh, I don't wanna take any credit for that. Yeah, yeah, so, they did a student survey, um, they've done a class associated, uh, a lot of the questions had to do with the amount of supplemented material that middle school was using when using Eureka, it was, I think, like forty to, it was a lot of, uh, supplemented material, Eureka was not providing, uh, uh, that what they needed. Um, so we were looking at how much would need to be supplemented from Big Ideas, uh, and then, uh, free algebra and algebra course support, Eureka does not, uh, provide that, and so Big Ideas does. Um, and then skills mastery practice, uh, consum- consumable resource book is available, but, um, most of the team would be using the tech, the tech piece, and that consumable resource book is, um, available on there as well, so we would not be purchasing consumable resource books. Um, it has great review skills and spiraling through the curriculum, uh, it has some focus on that fluency, uh, it's visually, more visually appealing and engaging for students. And then there were questions about data and, um, how it aligns with the DCS curriculum. So, um, we wanna look at the student survey. You wanna speak to this, since you have given it?
See the, in general sense, a lot of the kids are.
Whatever.
Yes, we're talking about math, right? But in a general sense, the impression we're getting is that they felt more engaged with, uh, at least visually appealing stuff, it's not like immediate, ugh, look at it and stuff, so. So that's the general sense we're getting from that. And the online, uh, the online component for the kids, you know, yeah, it was actually harder than I thought in terms of, uh, positive or neutral, um, I found it interestingly enough, enough of the kids really like, uh, more of a hard copy work than going online, which is kind of contrary to what I would have guessed, but, uh, this went all the time, online's, like, Big Ideas is beautiful online, but, and we use it, uh, intermittent in between their, in between, like, physical copy work and stuff like that, and find that a lot of the kids, maybe it's just because the feedback I'm getting is right after, like, we're doing, uh, Star, we've done SAS, or maybe they just computer that. But they, they, uh, a lot of them prefer to not have to, uh, be answering questions. Still more positive than, you know, smarter than like that, that's what I'm seeing.
Yeah. Um, I would also, I'm sorry to put a little more background into this, we've met with Big Ideas twice, once virtually, once in person, uh, so they've given us a lot of, uh, help guiding us to the, the online interface as well. And answered a lot of questions that we had.
There's a lot to it online, and it's, like, we're still, we're still growing and learning from it, but it's just, whatever we wanna get from it, we can, and we can add more to it, it's really interesting.
Slightly overwhelming, but, uh, well.
But it was really helpful to have those guys come in on person, in person, and like, talk to students.
And they said that they'd be able to provide more PD, um, some of it would be at a cost, while others, they said, could, like, just eat a quick little questions, obviously no answer. Um, they would be able to provide some free online PD times with us, so those pieces, even if we, um, go this route, like, we will still have support in it.
I think most of us felt too, that just working with them, exploring and getting more used to it. You know, that's how I, I learned a lot, in the online, I just have to dig and clap, oh, yeah, okay, and then next time it's easier to use and stuff like that.
Um, I just wanna comment, as regards to the resource online, the one fabulous thing that I personally appreciate is when you assign any kind of assignment online, when you're trying to modify the assignments, we can do that this three week, and the children will not know otherwise. And so there were a lot of times, I've had a lot of students say, do half the problems, I wanna do half the problems, like, I, you know, they want, they want equality in those regards, which I don't blame them for, but, you know, to make the appropriate accommodations, when a student logs in online, they're just only answering the questions that were given to them, and they will not know that their assignment was modified, so.
We can see through the progress, you can see when things were turned in, you can see, like, how long they worked on it, how well they put into it.
And there's many resources, when they have online, there was worked out examples that we have features, that we can include worked out examples, videos, the skill associated to that particular assignment that they need to review potentially, and there is a live online chat feature that they would talk to through text if we wanted to provide that for students, so there's many, many, uh, uh, help that, you know, if parents don't feel comfortable doing, it's been a while, you've done eighth grade maths, middle school maths, so we can't remember it all, but the live chat is from, um, college students from, I believe, Penn State math majors, uh, that are there from like eight to midnight, I believe, Monday.
I think it's four, four o'clock, it's really neat.
Four, yeah. Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a, to have the chance to, if they, if they want to, own their word, and, um, they're, they're not stuck have, like, I just don't know. Well, there's an answer for that right here, like, this, see the, see how they worked out, I mean, we're still working on getting them to take that ownership, but it is a potential for them.
It'll show them, show the teachers too, if they're using the skills builder, and what steps they are taking to actually, like, learn it as well. So if they're not, you can guide students more to that, and from the intervention perspective, like, they, um, there's a lot of, uh, like I said, it has those skills builders, so like, if they're struggling in one area, it'll backtrack and kind of say, okay, this is what they need to work on in order to be successful here. So from the intervention perspective, that's super helpful, right? So it'll backtrack through the standards.
And better to support students, we can, when we, students turn in their assignments, we can see what resources they have accessed, like, what they've reached out to. Like, if they wanted to talk on the chat and they didn't, we see that information, and so we can put the ownership on the students, and say, I don't understand this, we can show them. We can see if they looked at the video, do they look at the explain steps, or they even chat to the person to provide that help, because they, these are the extra resources that you have to use, and you're not utilizing them, so it puts more ownership on the students, and having that conversation with them as well.
Um, it aligns to Common Core, which our DCS curriculum is, uh, based off of Common Core. Additionally, um, yeah, additionally, it's, um, aligned to mathematical practices, which part of our DCS curriculum is, um, written based off of as well. So there's a lot more information, but we felt like we could open it up more to questions after we showed maybe the costs, like, with that question mark, actually. They'll take you back here, if you wanna go to, I know.
Look at that.
That, that I will take credit for.
Well done, well done.
You wanna go to a cost association, and so this is what we're looking at as far as, um, the cost. So about twenty to twenty-five books per grade level or course, because we have those in the classroom, um, and then the digital licenses for each student, um, and what that looks like, we said twenty to twenty-five, looking at the numbers moving forward, um, and then obviously, if there's more, we can get those throughout the year, and so the total cost is at the bottom there.
And then that would be the initial cost, and then each. Okay, so the first task would be to invite them to a meeting?
I would, I would think. I would think you would wanna identify what you want to do in that meeting, but if you were to invite them to a meeting with the conceptual from the first time around, with some, you know, that thirty thousand foot kind of bird's eye of, this is what we originally proposed, we'll, we'll, that didn't go slow. Um, here are, for the benefit of the new board members, here are all the other things that were discussed, you know, the, the conceptual out there, there's other variations over there, variation over here, things that you could necessarily squeeze out of any one of them, and whatever the footprints were, and then see, I would solicit community feedback from that, and at the same time, and see if, you know, if you can hopefully get some community input, but I think that's the starting point for your discussion, and I think there was some quick and dirty formulas that the architects had to be able to put very rough construction estimates on that, and maybe it's, can you apply your construction estimates, leave renovation out of it, because we don't need to renovate, we already know the subject system, we're not doing paving necessarily, to build this box, what is a rough construction estimate on all those conceptuals they did, if you can, talk to the community and say, this is what classrooms and bathrooms looks like, or a little bit more, a little bit more, because we've heard community members come and say they support an addition, they wanna keep it simple, but then they say, like, but I want a bigger nurses station, more offices, and we want this, and we want this, and we want this, well, we're, we're straying from that, so if the, the community wants classrooms and bathrooms, that's a square box with rooms in it, and it's gonna look like we all picture a school looking like.
So is the idea then to come up with a bunch of different ideas, like this, and then you add this, you have that, costs associated with it, and then have a warrant article in March?
I mean.
Or is this something we do a public, you know, have a meeting about it, do a survey, how are we gonna list, you know, how are we gonna get that feedback from people? It's the first thing I wanna know is why wasn't it voted in? I mean, I know what I heard people say, but.
A lot of it was, I think.
I think they needed a community center too, I know.
Well, it was a separate article.
Yeah.
So they didn't have to vote for that, right? That was just, that was a separate thing. Um, we had a full renovation of this building, and I think there was some confusion as to why we wanted to do that, and, and then, you know, the feedback is, well, we should renovate this building, and we can't renovate this building without another building to educate our kids, and while this one's being renovated, but we're, we're making very rapid ground, headway on not doing renovation to the extent that we were discussing in that project, but if we, once the roof is done, and we, the fire alarm system's been done, I mean, there's a, you know, there's millions of dollars worth of work that's been pumped into the building, is it relayed out, is it, is, you know, have we changed the, the, the interior footprint? No, that has stayed exactly the same, but have we improved the systems? Yes, we're rapidly making improvements in the system, so maybe the next project, you leave this building as it currently is, and then you continue to ask for additional funding, we say, okay, you know, in, in eight years, we're gonna tear up all the floors, we're gonna, or we're gonna go through, and whatever those projects are, and you just keep, every summer, picking your way on a big project, and trying to find it through order of the corn basis, and let the community decide that way. And if that's the case, then you say you're just looking at a, a thirty or forty thousand square foot classroom, bathrooms, an office or two, or whatever you need, but something much more modest, and you just float that as a bond. Uh, the community provided a bunch of feedback prior to us going with the plans that we went with, that they wanted this new collaborative learning spaces, and they wanted these community areas, and they wanted these common spaces, and the plans that we put out were what, in every meeting we had, was the direction the community in those meetings was asking us to go with. Now, but the price may or may not have been the factor, I don't know. Um, it certainly seems that that was a concern to a lot of people, and I think for a lot of people, they just want, they just want the modules to go away, and they just want that to be a permanent concrete structure with toilets, and so.
But like, taking that approach, one of the drawbacks, and one of the ways we got to forty-five million dollars, was that we also, as part of this renovation, we put in, like, ductwork for AC.
We did all of it.
Credit control stuff, which meant getting this whole building while we had the kids in the other new building, like, that was, that's kind of weird.
Yeah, that's a way, that, right.
So, so if we just put up this new, you know, box they were describing, that does not address the ductwork, it does not address the AC in this building, other than the window units.
The lack of outlets for technology.
Lack of outlets, those, all kinds of limitations, so it would not be able to be addressed without other, other.
No, we're, we're basically building a separate building that's gonna be nice and new and modern, and we're gonna attach to our thirty year old building, with a couple of breezeways, or however we end up doing it. But I think, I think the first, maybe the first step is just to go back to, to the Alvin Renziger and say, hey, can you just pull those conceptuals, completely disregard the renovation portion that we had kind of calculated in, can you just give us, you know, your, your construction estimate, which sometimes is as simple as going, you know what, right now, we're seeing four hundred dollars a square foot for construction, three hundred dollars a square foot for construction, and just saying, here's your thirty thousand foot, this is what eight million looks like, this is what twelve million looks like, this is what eighteen million looks like, this is what twenty million looks like, and so on and so forth, and then getting the community, showing them all, and saying, okay, well, this is what, this is eight, and this is gonna give you six bathrooms, the quantity or whatever, but I mean, this is gonna give you your basic, and you're nicer, and then this allows us to have different space, and more blah, 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 and then try and solicit the feedback, the hardest thing you're gonna have is getting feedback from a large cross-section of the community, it's always very simple to get feedback from a small cross-section. feedback from a large cross-section of the community. It's always very simple to get feedback from a small cross-section. But getting feedback from a large cross-section of the community is a challenge. And so I think once you have the, hey, maybe it's eight, ten, and twelve, and fifteen, or whatever it is, and then I think your focus becomes, and maybe it's more than, maybe it's, it's a two-year process, is you start trying to solicit as much feedback so that you can then go back to the valley and say, okay, we've, we've been running around town with plan A, B, C, D, E, F. And they all want to pay for A, but they like this and this out of C, so can we find a way to incorporate it in? And then try to do that. But that's a, it's an undertaking that that process from start to finish is probably a twelve month process. So if, if, if you were endeavoring to put something on the ballot in March right now, it would be an accelerated process. If you were going to say, we're endeavoring to put something on the ballot a year from March, it would be in a more, and this is a lesson learned, I think, maybe a little bit, I think, this is, this is a learned lesson. I think you would be in a less ambitious time too. More realistic. I like the term ambitious, but however you want to call it.
I think getting it on this March.
Yeah.
And your other.
Better not to anyway, cause we're gonna.
Yeah. Your other issue to deal with.
Um, yes, but I do think we should sort of kick off those things sooner than later. So I wonder if we should look at the calendar and see if we can invite the architects to one of our work sessions. Do we think the July? We don't, we don't do July meeting. Excellent. We have June twenty-first. We have June twenty-first. Um. And then it would be August. I think June twenty-first is in the year will be done, school year will be done. So there won't be as much, shouldn't be as much business or agenda. We have more time to go to it. And this will just really be us discussing with the architects. I mean, obviously we will let people know and invite them if they would like to attend that this would not be the, we're presenting options for feedback.
So are you, are you intending to have them come back with all the other conceptual they had and just kind of throw them all up on the?
For June twenty-first, yeah.
Just have their session?
Yeah. Like a brainstorming session, which I know you guys have done and for it, ad nauseam, but.
I wasn't on the plane, so I didn't do it. Is that the one? No, no.
I think it's good with three new board members for them to review the process. And this is what we did, this is where we got to where we got to. And they've obviously had projects that needed to go back out and they can tell you how they.
Sometimes they need to simmer for a little while before they, they burn the lead.
Okay.
But that being said, you know what that means? You need modules from years to come.
That is true. Um, do you reach out to the architect or do I?
Yes.
Like, do I need to do?
No, I've got to know.
Perfect. Um, yes, and that leads us into our next agenda item, which is the modular lease survey, survey results. Oh.
Do you want to deal with the modulars now?
Yeah, let's deal with the modulars while we're talking about it.
I would make a motion to sign yet another year's worth of leases to Shabi. One for one of the buildings at fourteen twenty a month, the other one for twelve sixty-three per month. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Why is one cheaper?
Uh, maybe because this one died underneath the.
Uh, do you all, I don't remember when this happened, but the idea of buying the modules is.
It was wildly unpopular, although fiscally responsible.
And they would need to be on a warrant article, so there's not anything we can really do about that.
I would just say that the extension dates on one of these are very wonky. Four oh seven, month four oh seven of twenty twenty-three. Um, so it should be the same extension dates, I assume, on both sides.
Yeah, I think so.
Um. Any other discussion before we renew the building?
We also just sort of gave out, one of the things that we, that we have talked about, I'm not sure I have a point here, but, um, if this timeline of like, if now we just said that maybe some warrant article next March gets on, and maybe gets approved. And then maybe there is what, six months to build up before we actually break down, and then the building and actually removing that, that they wouldn't actually leave, even if that's.
There's, it's probably a four year, four, right now you're four to five years.
Wait until that's all done and open.
Yeah. From a fiscal standpoint, it, we should own, we should have bought those modules twenty years ago. And when we, we hauled them into town, we should have just.
Yeah.
Cause we paid an infinite amount more for all the years, we should have. That being said, uh, when, when we, the previous board had this discussion about, does it, is it prudent? When we were discussing warrant articles last year, to spend sixty thousand dollars to, was it sixty? Sixty?
I thought it was sixty a piece.
Sixty a piece. It was sixty a piece to own them. Um, the members of the community were appalled at us having that, uh, open, open discussion.
And sort of, we were going to need to extend them for this year anyway.
They have to vote.
Because we would have to vote next March to buy them. And then we could get rid of them next year. But so for this lease, we're going to have to.
They're in there for the next four to five years, no matter what.
But we can, of course, discuss it again. When we're discussing warrant articles in the fall. Um, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any of those? Okay. Now, survey results. And I just would like to thank Patty and Miss Woody for all of.
Mrs. Swanson.
And Mrs. Swanson for all of the work and help in getting the survey out and responding to and ready so we could review today. I know it was a lot of work, so thank you for that.
So I, um, this afternoon, I closed the survey and stopped accepting responses. Um, so that I could just copy and paste the, the summary of the questions, just so that we had something for tonight to go over. Um, I can post this on the website tomorrow if you'd like me to. This, I think we have a lot more manipulation of the data to do, but I just wanted to get a quick summary to you, um, of, of answers. So um, there's only four, there were four questions. I didn't do the last questions. It's, it's too cumbersome to print off all the responses. Um, but in terms of, we have four hundred and forty-nine total. We, um, made sure there were no duplicates. Made sure that they were all fit sixth and seventh graders.
Oh, was that, what's the to, the total of the?
Uh, a hundred and seventy-six, I believe.
Mrs. Woody, how many total students?
Uh, the total students was a hundred and sixty. Maybe a little less, hundred and sixty.
Okay.
Ish, yeah.
Um, do you want to just summarize?
Might as well, please.
So for the grade level of the students, for fifth graders, we had fifty-four, for sixth graders, we had fifty-two, and for seventh grade, we had, uh, forty-six. So that's really actually really good, really, really good for question, questionnaire.
Cause the, each grade is roughly fifty, I think sixty, yeah, I think very.
I think I broke it down. I'm just finding that email that I sent me Patty in terms of.
Um, so for number four, if you had to select a high school for your students today, given that busing will likely only be provided to Concord, which would be your first choice, and Co-Brown was ninety-one, Concord was forty-five. Um, Pinkerton was ten, PA was nine, and Dover was one.
And that's the total number of responses?
Yes. And then number five was if you had to select a high school for your students today, given that busing likely will be only provided to Concord, which would be your second choice. Co-Brown forty-eight, Concord forty-seven, Dover six, Pepperd Academy thirty-one, and Pinkerton twenty-five. And then, um, I did give you the summary data for the reasons for choosing the school, and people were allowed to check up to three. So looks like, um, distance was the first place for eighty-one, academic got seventy-seven, um, academic opportunities got seventy-seven, academic excellence got seventy-four. And then, um, the, the results went down from there a little bit. So this is just high level. Um, we're intending, I'm gonna, what I'll do is make a copy of the survey, take out the student names and the identifying information, and export it to a spreadsheet where we could sort, sort by, um, question, you could sort by grade level, so that we can dive into the data and the results a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be awesome. I think it would be helpful to see like, of the seventh grade families, what portion of them wanted to go to CHS versus Co-Brown.
Also want to know like the reasons too, like if the people chose Co-Brown, what were their top reasons?
Yeah.
If they chose Concord, what were the top reasons? Let's see that.
An interesting fact, is people would take, based on this, at least from that sample, they would select Co-Brown even with no transportation.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Did you want to address why you chose to put the busing only to Concord?
Yeah, so that, a question came up in public comments about why we worded, um, our questions. There was a lengthy discussion in our last meeting about wordsmithing, um, this exact question. We had, um, discussed putting it as a separate question, how important is busing, and then we ultimately sort of came to the conclusion that we likely would only be providing busing to Concord based on the current availability of buses. We are still going to have many students at Concord High School, um, in the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Um, regardless of like what this looks like, the sophomores, juniors, seniors from Deer Hill will still be at Concord. So at least for the foreseeable future, until that, those students are phased out, or if there's more buses. Um, and it will, you know, we haven't made any decisions about if we are going to pursue a school record or anything like that, but, um, it seemed like the most likely scenario was that we would provide busing to Concord. At least.
And also, I also want to say too, because we've been asked several times about why don't we have schools come in and present. And the reason is, if you really wanted this information first, we'd want to make some decisions about what are the schools that we're going to be looking for to be in contact with, some kind of negotiate with. And then, of course, we will have those schools come in and represent the students. We just felt that it was too early. And, um, so we're, that's definitely on our agenda.
Um, does anyone have anything else to discuss about the survey results at this point? Okay, so these will be made available. Um, unless anyone has anything to comment about that, they will go on, I assume, the SAU website?
Okay, the board, on the school board site, there's a high school information folder. Patty, are you going to share the spreadsheet with that?
Yes, yes, yep. Okay. Now we are on item F, trust fund expenditures. So we have several discussions to have under this topic. Um, the first piece of information I will give you is that your fund balance right now, as of what we know, is hovering around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that's not a lot, given the fact that you have three hundred thousand dollars in warrant articles to fund. Um, this, number two in this conversation is we need to decide whether or not you want to withdraw some funds from your, um, trust funds to reimburse the budget, or if you want to leave those expenses in the budget. Um, and then we do have a couple of requests for year-end spending. So um, the trust fund question is regarding Honeywell. Um, we had to do the software update, which ended up being nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. So right now that's in the budget, it's been paid for. If we go to the technology trust to take those funds, your technology trust only has twenty thousand dollars, five forty-one. So that would wipe out your technology trust if you decide, um, to switch that out of the budget. Um, the RB Lewis bills, to this point, we received two invoices totaling forty-seven thousand dollars. So that fire panel project could be funded, completely funded by the, um, trust fund. There was one point three in it. And then you're taking out, I think, five twenty-eight for septic. So that makes a good balance. Is that your question?
Well, I guess it's two of them. So the forty, how much was RB Lewis today?
Uh, forty-seven.
Have we paid that already out of the, already?
One invoice was paid, right, Trish? I think, oh, you paid both of them? So that's in there as of today?
I paid the twenty-seven thousand.
Oh, okay, then, yes, then everything's up, yes.
So we've paid, so the four fifty is taken in consideration, we already paid.
That you've already paid that stuff, yeah, yeah.
And then you said we had one point three in that facilities?
Yes, that's before the septic withdrawal, which I think Amber mentioned was like five twenty, that we had to take out for that.
And then, um, how much, what was the amount we were, what was four hundred being added July first?
Three hundred, three hundred.
Three hundred was July first? I didn't count that, no?
No, there was a series of a hundred thousand dollar warrant articles. Any one special add?
So July first, there's another three hundred going back in the past. So we'll be at one six less than five, we'll be nine hundred, eight hundred and seventeen. Eight seventy.
And then your final piece of data for tonight is that your max retainage that you can retain is, uh, three hundred two thousand six eighty-five. So that's something else you're gonna need to consider.
Um, it's based on valuation and there's like a formula, a percentage, and then on the state form, when you fill out your, your revenues and all that, they spit out the number that you can retain your max.
But we have four hundred and fifty left and three hundred thousand are going for warrant articles.
To trust funds, right.
So that's really a retainage of potentially a hundred and fifty.
Of each one fifty, yeah.
Is the, is the three hundred all just surplus or was there some taxation?
It was, I think it was all surplus.
I think those three that Amber highlighted were surplus. She specifically handed that to me and said, don't forget about these.
Oh, there's four hundred thousand that was raised from the taxes.
Four hundred from taxes?
Four hundred from taxes going into the building, or the, I'm sorry, I want to use the correct term. Article six, it was four hundred K, I had it in my head.
Okay.
All right, so article six, four hundred K was going into the school building, your pair of trust.
Oh, okay, that's, so you're not talking about funding them from surplus, you're talking about the building.
So the one point three is going to turn to one point seven.
Gotcha.
Which is going to draw down five hundred K.
Yep.
And change, suddenly one point one something.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we had a hundred K going into a, a site improvement fund, that was a new fund. A hundred K going into the specialized fund, and a hundred K going into the paper. Obviously, we're going to keep that. So, okay.
So that's three, yeah.
So there's three hundred coming out, and another four hundred raised from taxation. Leaving one fifty. So at the moment, if we, I'm sorry.
Please.
Okay. At the moment, if we leave the, the invoices for Lewis and, um, Honeywell and the budget, it retains some additional money that will not grow out of the facilities repair fund. It would, it would, the thing would impact initially would simply be just that retainage number, the ability, the amount of money we could hold for the teenager. I think I'm in favor of leaving that money as spent out of the budget as it currently is, because there are still more projects that leaving the money in the trust fund, so that as we approach next year's, um, kind of pit list for projects, which is potentially placing in the H-Track units. Um, we're not, hopefully giving it to our community for funding that project.
Uh, what was our retainage last year? Was it zero?
We have zero, because we had to use it up before we funded that million dollar, yeah.
And so the retainage number, if you're not familiar with it, we are allowed to hold, um, it's a mathematical formula, but I think it's two percent of the towns.
Two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent of towns total value, um, as our last line of defense emergency fund. And so for a number of years, that hovered somewhere in the vicinity of two hundred K. Which sounds like a lot of money, but when you consider that's two weeks worth of operating expenses, not even at this point, it isn't much at all. Um, so last year, because of the way a warrant article was amended. at deliberative, we had no fund balance because the entire fund balance went to feeding that article with the balance that we raised from taxation, so the retainage was put back into the budget as it is every year when it's not spent. And there was no money left for us to retain out. Historically, what we've done is we've taken two hundred dollars out of this pocket, put it back in the budget, taken a different two hundred dollars out of the budget, put it back in the retainage fund. So we are retained list right now, that is that's our last little bit of like safety mechanism. If we get into it, we have problems.
Yeah, but even despite being on a default budget, we still are running at half a million dollars. Yeah, which we just haven't had an emergency yet, fortunately. We had an emergency that.
But on a, on a fifteen, sixteen million dollar budget, half a million bucks is not that. I mean, you need one point yeah, you need one point two, right, on a, on a monthly basis to oh, one point two, one point three to run on a monthly basis, so it's a it's not two weeks and we, we when you think about it in that perspective, we're, we're, we're running within two weeks of what we anticipated, and I think in all fairness, most of that credit goes to the administration in trying to not spend money wherever they can, and that is historically been the case.
So what do you need for this?
So, um, we'll, we wait on the retainage bill because we can actually close the books and the money may get freed up, so you'll want that, all of that information before we do that piece. And I just want you to have that, have that information. Um, in terms of what we need tonight, we, um, Mrs. Woody has costs for the gym mats and the rugs that, um, were destroyed from the we had the sewage backup.
Do you need a motion on, um, keeping those other things from the motion?
Nope, the, we would only take action if you thought you were going to use the trust funds. We would schedule a public hearing at the next meeting, but if your intention is to leave the money where it is, then we don't need to.
Well, we still need to have a public hearing for the septic system.
Yeah, I think we did that one, right?
Uh, sorry.
We did, we did that one, right?
We don't, let's just go, yeah. All right, so before, does anyone have any issue with um, paying those expenses out of the budget versus the trust fund? Okay. Okay. Um, Mrs. Woody just handed you, uh, the tumbling mats, seven mats come to three thousand seven oh three. There's a landing mat, the trapezoid mats, it's all beyond me, uh, and then an incline mat. Um.
The bus.
And these are all. And a vault board. These are replacing things that were destroyed.
Yes.
And then, um, the rugs are at the bottom. Total for ninety-seven fifty, recommendation to, in case their shipping charges are off, is not to exceed ninety-nine hundred.
Move to approve and expense up to ninety-nine hundred dollars for the items listed on the handout. Thank you.
Any discussion?
That will reduce the fund balance.
That will reduce the fund balance by approximately ten thousand dollars. And the thirteen you approved for that. Correct. Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That was it for you guys, right, Mrs. Woody?
Yeah, that's.
That was it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think that is it for me in business. Uh, I will make a motion to go into non-public pursuant to the answer RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, two, little letters B and K.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Yes.
You are asked to leave. Kindly.
Just playing kindly.